It is seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting of board of selectmen to order. Our first item of business is the pledge of allegiance. Deputy First Selectman De Souza, would you kindly lead us?
Yep. I pledge allegiance to the flag. The republic which we stand on nation under God in the visible liberty and justice.
Thank you. Oh, my camera's not on. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you all now. All members of the Board of Selectmen are present. Oh, you know what? So here's something we're going to do a little bit different tonight. I am going to not allow participants to unmute themselves. Because last night at the Board of Finance meeting, we did get hacked or bombed, or whatever it is, by a bunch of people who were clearly causing a disruption. So I am expecting that to happen again. So I'm going to keep everybody muted. Except for members of the board. So actually, just to give this a try, Sarah, can you unmute yourself, please? No, you cannot. Okay. Can I unmute you?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Now, re-mute yourself and try and unmute you. Okay, so it's one and done. All right, I'm going to try and open the members. Everybody keeps moving on me. Sorry, you're unmuted.
I left myself unmuted from when you did it. If I mute myself and then try to unmute, I can't. Do I need to try to unmute again?
I want you to stay, I want you to stay open.
Okay.
Alan?
Yep.
I'm struggling to get Charlie. Good night. There you go.
It asks me permission to let you do it.
Oh, okay. That's interesting. All right, so what that'll do, now that everybody is open, is that'll stop us from being hacked like the Board of Finance was last night. That was disruptive, to say the least. As I said, all members of the Board of Selectmen are present. I do have a change I'd like to make to the agenda, and that's I'd like to star Agenda Item 10F. We will not be this evening in open session. So if I could have a motion to star Agenda Item 10F.
Sarah Muska, Selectman, I'll move that we star Item 10F.
Is there a second?
Marie, just a little second there.
I don't have any other changes to the agenda, so that, we'll vote on that motion and then we'll accept the agenda. So all in favor of starting 10F, Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman De Souza?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman Nordell?
Aye.
A motion to accept the agenda as amended, please?
Sarah Muska, Selectman, I'll move that we accept the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Marie, just a little second there.
Made by Sarah, seconded by Marie. Any discussion? Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman De Souza?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman Nordell?
Aye.
Okay. There are three sets of meeting minutes to approve. There's another one in the queue that we don't have quite ready yet, and that's the meeting minutes from September 3rd. Going in order, August 12th, special meeting.
Sarah Muska, Selectman, I'll move that we approve the meeting minutes of August 12th, 2020, special meeting.
Is there a second?
Marie, just a little second there.
Thank you. Any corrections? Seeing none? Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman De Souza?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman Nordell?
Aye.
Thank you, folks. August 20th.
Make a motion.
Go ahead, Alan.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of August 20th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made by Alan's, seconded by Sarah. Any corrections?
I do.
Marie?
Yeah, on page 16, under the comments, second paragraph from the bottom, fourth line down, where it says COVID-19 party, where they would provide, you got speeches, that should be pizzas.
Oh, sorry.
Guys, easy, okay? Just the kitchen that's inside King's Way. I'm not sure, got the right name on here.
I don't think it's the right spelling.
Yeah, so I don't know if it's important to correct that or not, but.
It's Carol Bean, K-R-O, and then bean, like a green bean or a lima bean?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's two words. I think it's Carol, A-R-O, Bean.
I'm not sure it's two Rs, though, Jason.
Oh, no, it's not. It's just one R.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Other questions? Selectman Baker?
Oh, I have.
Go ahead.
Page 17. Second paragraph. Sold it North has reached out to a family member that does a program for healthy children. I don't know where healthy came from. They're just children at Christmas.
Right.
Right, so if you could just delete that?
Yeah.
And that's definitely all I got. I'm sorry.
Any other corrections? Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman De Souza?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman Nordell?
Aye.
August 27th.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of August 27th.
Sarah Muska, Selectman, I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any corrections to this one? Seeing none? Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman De Souza?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman Nordell?
Aye.
Now, it's public participation. This is one of the public's two opportunities to address the board. Because I have everybody set up so that they are automatically muted and cannot unmute themselves, if you would like to speak, please use the reactions button and either do the clap or thumbs up and I will unmute you. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Rick, I'm unmuting Steve. In a minute. He needs to, Steve, you need to accept my invitation to unmute you. Steve, if you, if you would like to address the board, you need to accept the invitation to unmute. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Again, if you could just indicate by selecting a reaction, I'll send an invitation to unmute. Norrie? Norrie, can you, can you unmute? This is super frustrating. There you go.
Okay. Hi, Norrie Farmer, 247 South Water Street. Jason, it took like five shots. It kept saying you wanted me to unmute, but it wouldn't accept it. That's what took a while. I have a question about the election coming up. I'm hoping somebody can direct me. Is there a way to volunteer? You know, to, to help if, for whatever needs, you know, they're, they're talking about it all over the radio and whatnot, about, you know, places may be inundated with a lot of stuff that needs to get done and, and the lack of, lack of staff to do it with. So I was just wondering if it's possible.
It is, and it would be appreciated. And you can start that process by talking to the registrars of voters. Moderators, and I think the moderators are, is it, Marie, is it your daughter Nicole and Linda Sinsegalo? Are they the moderators?
I'm not sure yet. But if they would, depending on what party she is, she would contact either Karen, if she's a Republican, or she's a Democrat, would go to Angelo Salvarino. They'll be at the Town Hall Annex tomorrow morning. That's their hours. So she could contact them and let them know she's interested in helping out.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
So Steve, I'm going to send you a couple more invites to see if you would still like to address us. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, we'll try this again a bit later. Sorry for the, the different protocol tonight. There was a problem last night. I'm trying to avoid happening again. So there are two communications in your packet. The first one is a letter that I sent to the Planning and Zoning Commission in response to some of the community unease with the Silverman Group project. And I, as you can see from the, from the letter, I'm suggesting to the commission that they take a look at the processes by which they engage the public during their approval phase. I did send this to the commission ahead of their meeting last week, and they politely accepted the letter, but aren't really inclined to make any, any substantial changes. I think there will be a further conversation, but it's the start of a conversation on that. So I wanted you guys to know that I had sent that. And then, in response to the extension of the governor's emergency declaration, because of some of the executive orders that are in place, after consultation with Chief DiMarco and Deputy Chief Hart, we decided that it's best to extend the local declaration as well. So I included a copy for your information, and it'll be, if it hasn't been already, it'll be distributed to the folks that are on that CC. Next item is resignations and appointments.
Make a motion to accept with regret the resignation of William A. Lewis on the Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Is there a second?
A second for discussion.
Discussion.
Has anyone reached out to him to see if they could walk him through how to set that up for himself? Or is he not interested?
I'm not aware that that conversation is taking place. I'm not sure if the chairman of the commission has.
Okay.
Any other comment on the resignation? I would just add that it's customary for us to accept letters of resignation with regret. So if the record could kindly note that. Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman De Souza? Oh, I'm sorry, Alan?
Good, aye.
Selectman De Souza?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman Nordell?
Aye.
New appointments?
Sarah Muska, Selectman, I'll move to add Robert Leach to the Diversity Council as a regular member for a term expiring August 20th, 2024.
Second.
Discussion. Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman De Souza?
Oh, I thought we were on discussion.
I didn't realize there was any.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll cancel the roll call and turn back to discussions. Marie?
At the last meeting, it was indicated by a couple of the board members that there were several people were looking to get on the board, and they were reluctant at last meeting for us to appoint the individual that we appointed. Because of that, I don't see any of those. Are those forthcoming or not?
So I circled back with the young lady who was kind of the impetus behind this idea and suggested that she had people that were interested in stepping forward. We need to encourage them to do so. And I haven't heard anything more on that.
Okay.
Sarah?
Sarah Muska, Selectman, I was wondering if there's any way to make the application for applying for boards and commissions more prominent? I know that it's not easy to find. It's under First Selectmen. Is there a way to possibly make it on the homepage or make it at the top of the Boards and Commission page? Just because I think maybe some people are having difficulty finding it and are not sure where to navigate on our website to be able to apply.
That is a very good idea. I'm sure that there is a way that we can do that. What's happened in some cases in the past is when we add a button to the, to the front page, we need to remove another button. But I already see how we could do that in such a way so that we don't actually lose anything. We can consolidate a couple of things. That's a good idea. We'll do that going forward.
Thank you.
Any other discussions on the appointment?
Selectman Nordell, yeah, I too reached out to Ms. Rivera, encouraging her that if she had people that were looking to join this, to do so, and then someone who, I also knew personally, I had reached out to them, but I agree with Sarah. I had difficulty finding the application in order to link it to send to them so that they could fill it out. What that person finally decided to do, I don't know, but I was hoping to see his application at this meeting.
I, I would also suggest that if you're, anybody's having difficulty, that you suggest them that they just call the First Selectman's office and they can help them through it.
Well, certainly, we can, we can make that change to the website, and, you know, there, there are other means by which we can encourage public participation. I mean, we all post our reports on social media. So the question at hand is the appointment of Commissioner Leach. Any other discussion on that? Seeing none? Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman De Souza?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman Nordell?
Aye.
All right, so, period. Next is 10A. In your packet, there is a contract that the tax collector put together for us for the replacement of the ATM in Town Hall. The company that we currently use is going out of business. The guy is a single shingle business, and he's decided to retire and travel the country. So he's pulling his machines out of wherever he has them, including in Town Hall, effective October 1st. And I asked Patty to see what can we done, what we can do about finding a replacement for that. And in like two hours, she was able to come up with this as an alternative to it. So this would allow this to be a resource that's available to the public. Obviously, there's not a huge urgency around it right now, but shortly, when we reopen to the public, there will be a need for this to be at least a convenience to the members of the public who are coming through the building. So it is a contract. It's a service agreement. So I wanted to bring it to the board for your consideration and hopefully ratification. It's pretty boilerplate. Charlie?
This says minimum 50 per month. Is that $50 or is that 50 transactions?
50 transactions.
That seems like a lot to get out of Town Hall.
Not in the normal course. A lot of people, taxes in cash. Car taxes in particular.
But isn't that just seasonal?
Yeah. It also says, if you look at 6.5, neither party shall be liable for the failure to perform its obligations under the agreement. Such failure, failure is due to acts or events beyond such parties' reasonable control. I would think that limited collection series is an act of the government.
Okay, just a question.
If it becomes an issue, we can give them 30 days notice and cancel it.
I think he'd rather have his ATM somewhere than in his garage or their warehouse, wherever.
Other questions or comments? Can I have a motion?
Marie, just a little, I'll make a motion that we accept your, the agreement with T and M. That says Boilards and Barstools.
It's T and M Distributors, Inc.
T and M Distributors, Inc.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman De Souza?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman Nordell?
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
Jason, quick question for you.
Yeah.
Has this already been put into place? Because it's on, because it says the agreement goes into effect on June 22nd, 2020.
No, this, this doesn't go into effect until October 1st.
All right, so on the second page, first ATM placement agreement made this June 22nd, 2020?
Yeah, if you note, that's an error in the contract.
All right.
Yeah. No, we didn't even hear about these people until sometime end of last week.
Okay.
And the existing guy is here until October 1st. So there was not a ton of urgency, but there was some urgency. I will have that corrected, though. All right, 824 referral. So at last meeting, we talked about the concert, the recreational conservation easement that Mr. John and Dan Burnham wanted to convey to the town as part of a land sale for their north property. This is the actual easement, and I wanted you guys to see this. This is not something that would have precluded the referral to planning and zoning, because what they do is they look at the parcel in question and they determine whether or not it fits in with the P O C D. But nonetheless, I want, there's no action, action this evening. When the 824 referral comes back, we would need to take that up, take this up at that time. So this is just, this is really an FYI piece of information based on what we had talked about last meeting. Again, it doesn't affect the referral. It's just more. Questions or comments on that?
When it comes back, are you update the dates?
Yep. There's going to be another 824 discussion in a little bit. Next, I'm going to invite, for the next three items, I'm going to invite Chief DiMarco and Deputy Chief Hart to join. Gentlemen, I'm going to send you invites to unmute yourselves. Excellent. We're getting better. Are you gentlemen?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
So are you, are you ready to begin now, sir?
Yep.
Go right ahead.
Go ahead.
Go right ahead. Okay, so we'd like to discuss the, the police legislation that has been adopted and is going into effect as it relates to police body cameras and police dash cams. Before I turn it over to the deputy chief to discuss the House bill, I want to remind you that we appeared before you a couple of months ago to discuss our own efforts at diversity and how we police in a modern era. We're a police department that likes to get in front of things that are happening in the world, and we did that by talking to you about eight can't wait and how we were in compliance with that already, where a lot of places weren't de-escalation, duty to intervene, comprehensive reporting and review and all that stuff, and we were already in compliance with that. We talked about our PERF 30, or the Guiding Principles of Use of Force, that we've adopted, that it's sanctity of life and how we've adopted that and how we use force and interact with people. We talked about being an agency that adopted the six pillars of 21st century policing, building trust and legitimacy and policy and oversight and technology and embracing training and education, and how we were in the forefront of that, and how we deal with people with persons in crisis and mental health, how we had an embedded social worker, and we have one here now working under a grant. And then we flash forward to this national police crisis that's continuing on, and then the adoption of this police legislation that occurred. So we're here tonight as an agency that wants to stay in the forefront of what's going on. We don't want to be rushing to get things done. We want to do what we normally do, and that's research and document and prepare for what's coming down the pike. Cameras are mandatory, body cameras and, and dash cams, and I'd like to turn it over to the deputy chief so he can go over HB 6004.
Okay, a discussion on the House bill 6004 is, is very complex, but I think that the board needs to be aware of certain aspects of it and certain unfunded costs of the bill. And I'll, I'll skim through it very quickly, and then we'll focus on the points that the chief had mentioned, the body cameras and the car cameras. But initially, the Section 7-294D is modified by this House bill, and it put into play that POC must develop a policy wherein renewal of certification of police officers, which is done every three years, must include a negative urinalysis drug test. So there's an unfunded cost right there that the town is going to have to deal with. So every, essentially what it's saying is every three years, our officers, each 20, each of the 26 officers is going to have to go through a urinalysis, and there's a cost associated with that. And under that same section, there is a mandatory that Post also has to develop a policy for, and this policy has to be developed by January 1st, 2021, which is coming up very fast. And in that would state that each officer has to go through a mental health assessment every five years, and these can be very pricey and costly and another unfunded mandate. So every five years, we're going to have to go through these assessments. Let's see. There's a lot of sections that don't necessarily have an effect, but I have to note those two sections that I did mention. Those normally, if we were to implement those outside of legislation, those are mandatory subject of bargaining for the union. So that's, I believe, is going to be another contentious point. I know the unions are rattling their sabers on this. So I think as soon as we try to implement that through POC, there's maybe some legal involved in that as well, because, again, they're both mandatory subjects of bargaining. Let's see. So we'll get to the dash cams section. So we'll get to the dash cams section. That has to do with section twenty nine dash six D. And section seven dash two seven seven B is amended by this. And essentially, it says effective July first, twenty twenty two, dashboard cameras shall be used in each police patrol vehicle. So essentially, every marked vehicle that is out there on the front line, except vehicles that are administrative vehicles, and that would be vehicles like the chief and my vehicle, as long as the occupant, meaning the chief or I, are wearing a body worn camera. And then there's some exclusions that it talks about. For example, animal control vehicles are excluded from that need. So on that point, we currently have five vehicles that have dashboard cameras in them, and it's a watch guard system that we purchased several years ago. It some of it was purchased from a grant, some of it was purchased by funds allocated by the town. We have the infrastructure in place, the server, the connection, a wireless connection where data is downloaded automatically. The product we use is WatchGuard. We're very happy with the product, and we've had five years of experience with it. Further on that section, they changed the section, it used to say. Back up a second on that. There is a section there that talks about the grant, and there was, you know, I know that it's been kicked around that there's grant. It says effective upon a passage, O P M shall administer a grant program for body worn camera devices or services and dashboard cameras, but it is for first time purchase of dashboard cameras only. So if your agency has never had dashboard cameras, they can apply for this grant that's supposed to come out. There's talk that it's there's a four million dollar pot. However, it's going to be fifty percent reimbursement to distressed communities and thirty percent reimbursement to non distressed communities. So I think it was we somewhere along the line, it was mentioned, this grant is supposed to go into effect between June thirtieth, twenty twenty one and June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. We have not seen anything on that grant information. So the only thing that we would be eligible for was would be the body cameras. They further changed section fifty four dash thirty three B to say, it used to say, oh, sorry, wrong section. All right, my notes. Got a little ahead of myself there. Under, like I was saying before, under the sections that I mentioned relative to dashboard cameras, effective July one, twenty twenty two, each police officer shall wear a body worn recording equipment on such officer's outermost garment and shall position such equipment at the midline of such officer's torso when using such equipment. And then it goes on to a lot of other information that we don't really need to share tonight that talks about when you should record when. And there's a there is a post policy on it, so we would adopt and use that policy. So I think this segues us to the chief and some information that he has on body worn cameras in addition to dash cameras. We would be required, just before I turn it over to the chief, we have eleven frontline vehicles. We have eleven patrol vehicles with modems in them, that's why I know we have eleven of them. And so we already have five, so we would be required to purchase six watch guard dash cameras for the remaining six vehicles that don't have it. And chief, I'll kick it over to you.
So in an effort to be as frugal and cost effective as possible, we are not eligible for the in car camera dash mounted camera grant. Our only option for the potential body cameras would be in competition with ninety some odd local police departments trying to get that. So through hardcore professional networking, I figured we'd take a different route. And I secured a donation to get all of the body cameras for free. So that has occurred, we can get those. That China is brand new in the state of Connecticut, I'm the first person to probably be doing this. So a lot of people are going to jump on the bandwagon, but we are first on this list through the town of Branford. They are going to donate their cameras to us, their docking stations, their hardware at the tune of seventy two thousand dollars worth of free equipment to the town of East Winter. So we've done the work to look at everything that we need to get the cameras, to get the six cameras in the cars, all of the supporting hardware, the installation and everything else. We need thirty four thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars for vista HD cameras and options to outfit the car and everything. And then the quote for the installation is thirty eight twenty five for a total of thirty eight thousand seven hundred and ninety five dollars. So if the town kicks in that thirty eight thousand seven hundred and ninety five dollars, we're going to get seventy two thousand dollars worth of free cameras. We're going to get nineteen thousand dollars from our asset forfeiture money and twelve thousand dollars from asset forfeiture to pay for licensing, software warranties, things of that nature. So in essence, the town's going to get one hundred and three thousand seven hundred and sixty five dollars for free and thirty eight thousand dollars seven hundred and ninety five that you'd have to put in. It far exceeds anything you could get for the grant option. There's there's no way we could seek a grant that would match that type of a program. This is mandatory, we're trying to get out ahead of it, we want to build policy, we want to install in the cars, we want to get all the infrastructure and everything set up to do this. This includes all of the, what's the word I'm looking for, Raj, the the computer adaption for.
A redaction software.
My brain, it's my brain is not firing right. So all the redaction software and everything else, the police commission and the police department has been working very closely together for the last eight or nine months, trying to get ready for the redaction and the civilian position that we've been talking about. And we're ready to go and we're ready to do this, we just need the support of our our elected officials to continue on our quest to be a police department that is in the forefront of serving their community fairly inequitably, and this is a way to do it. So I am requesting from the town thirty eight thousand seven hundred and ninety five dollars. And just so you know, oh, go ahead, Raj.
If I could just add real quick, you you may be thinking to yourself, well, we don't need to do this according to the to the House bill in the statute until July twenty twenty two, so why are we before you now? I'm sure that's in the back of some folks' heads. And I'll tell you the main reason why we're coming right now. Because the way these systems work, the cameras are now become the, I don't know if you're familiar with the watch guard system. There's a looks like a little bit bigger than a pager to to date myself a little bit. And that's where the microphone is on the watch guard camera system. So the way it works now, when you integrate the watch guard body camera, that becomes the speaker. So we have what we have to do is we have to retrofit the five cars that we currently have and get rid of those pager sized microphones and convert them to the slip in insert for the body mics to charge them and to communicate with that. So automatically, the way it works is the body camera footage is downloaded immediately to the DVR in the car. Then the car downloads that directly to the server at the police department when they come here for a break or at the end of the shift. So why do we want to do this now? We want to do it as a package deal as and we because watch card is working with us on prices because we're doing it as a backly package deal. Where we want to have all these cameras, body cameras warranted, and we want to outfit the remaining six vehicles so we don't have to retrofit them piecemeal as we move forward. So that's kind of the main reason why we want to do this right now. Not to mention the availability of these cameras as we move forward and get closer to the July twenty twenty two date. Are we're going to be waiting in line to get equipment.
I can tell you point blank that over the next several months, according to the vendors, it's going to get dramatically more difficult because larger police departments, Hartford's and Bridgeport's and Waterbury's who are going to purchase hundreds and hundreds of these, it is going to get extremely complex and difficult. One of the other major reasons is competition for these cameras. They're available in the third week of October. That's why we're trying to get ready because Branford can turn them over to us and then all the warranties and everything else that can transfer over now. There's no reason to go behind the curve and wait until we're forced to, you know, compete and everything else. We want to do it, you know, in accordance to a good timeline. And the other thing is simple, these cameras protect the community, they protect police officers, and they protect the town from lawsuits and everything else. So it's it's a good idea to to do this now and do it in a very cost effective way with pound money. So that's what we're requesting.
So I think that this is a no brainer. And chief, you're absolutely to be commended for getting such a sizable chunk of the costs donated to the town. That is, I cannot express our appreciation strongly enough for that. I do have two questions, and again, I'm I'm on board with this, absolutely. The first question is probably the easier of the two. Are these units, particularly the dash cams, are they transferable? So when a when a car rolls off the line, can the existing watch guard unit be rolled into the new one?
Yeah, absolutely. It takes some programming and some internal mechanisms, but yes, it's one hundred percent transferable to us. So the body cameras will will transfer over. On the dash cams, the six will will be new, but anything you want to add that?
No, I mean, to to just illustrate that, we have at least one or two cameras that are in their third vehicle. They've been transferred three times.
Okay, and the second question that I had, the the thirty eight seven ninety five gets us what we need for the remaining dash cams and for body cameras. Is that number inclusive of any I T costs that would be associated with that? Installation, servers through cloud storage, ongoing maintenance, that kind of stuff?
Absolutely, this is um, this is everything. And if there were any surprise costs down the road, we would seek alternative funding options for that. We're we're coming to the town for this one stop and this one amount.
Okay, so we don't, we don't need to do, you know, some sort of an inflator here just to cover the I T costs. You're you're comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, Selectman Baker.
Muted, I believe.
Muted, I see. That's what you get, you shouldn't shouldn't mute yourself.
Sorry, I had to sneeze earlier when the chief was talking.
That's what I did too, that's why I turned the camera.
Um, yeah, I was just curious, you know, this all, you said this stuff was getting downloaded back to the car, then downloaded back to the station. Is like I'm assuming none of that uses like cell data that we're not going to have increased or you're not going to have increased costs for that type of stuff, are you?
No, we've been doing it that way for for five years already. It's so an antenna outside of our building and it's all proprietary to watch guard.
Any other questions or comments? Sarah?
I would just like to thank the chief and deputy for coming to us in advance and planning ahead. I have my own thoughts on the police accountability bill. I stayed up watching it debated in the Senate, and I thought there were a lot of things, especially this putting more mandates and costs onto the municipalities. But I would like to thank them for their work on getting those body cameras and saving the town that money that's really commendable, and thank you.
Thank you for saying that, and we could probably talk for hours on what my personal beliefs are on a lot of what's in that bill. But I'll I'll not do that tonight. So we are working to meet what that bill is going to go into effect, say and do. You know how Roger and I are, we're we're trying to be as cost effective as possible, and we appreciate you that you noticed it. Thank you.
Other comments? So what we would, I'm assuming what the request is from for the chief and the deputy, and guys, correct me if I'm wrong, but we would add appropriation and request that the Board of Finance approve added appropriation of thirty eight thousand seven ninety five. There are, so as you, I think all know, when we do added appropriations, this board needs to initiate them. The Board of Finance needs to approve, and then they traditionally need to go to town meeting. But there is an executive order that suspends that for emergency financial issues. I think that this would qualify for that. But after we make our our motion and recommendation to the Board of Finance, I can dive back into those and work with the chief and the deputy to line up appropriate next step.
One thing I was going to say on closing is obviously everything we're asking for is supported by watch guard quotes, and we would submit all of the this to you tomorrow if it were approved so that every single cost is listed out. It's a and it's an extensive quote that spells everything out.
Okay. Could I have a motion?
Sarah Muska, oh, go ahead, Marie.
Go ahead, Sarah.
If this wording is incorrect, just let me know. I'll move to recommend that the Board of Finance approve an appropriation totaling thirty eight thousand seven hundred and ninety five dollars to the police department for I don't know, do I need to add exactly what it's for? Or do I say to, do I say to town meeting even though we're not going to town meeting or?
No, just just recommend to the Board of Finance that they make the added appropriation for dash cams and body cams.
Okay, I'll move to recommend that the Board of Finance approve an added appropriation of thirty eight thousand seven hundred and ninety five dollars for body and dash cameras.
There a second?
I'll say that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Alan?
I'd just like to say thanks to the chiefs again for being proactive and for saving money. Almost expected now, you guys do it all the time for us, thank you.
So we're going to vote in a second, but the Board of Finance meets in October, on October twenty first. The Board of Selectmen meets on October first and October fifteenth. So we probably will have a special, a very brief special meeting to take up whatever the executive orders require us to do after the Board of Finance approval shortly after the twenty first. So I just want to put you guys kind of unnoticed for that. Because I don't want this to, based on their presentation, I don't think it prudent that this drag on much beyond the Board of Finance's regular meeting. There's no further discussion? Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman De Souza?
Absolutely.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman Norde?
Aye, good job, guys.
Motion passes, thank you, gentlemen. You're up for AVTEC.
Why don't you start, Deb?
Yeah. Unfortunately, when it rains, it seems to pour. And we, I was recently contacted by our communications, which is our radio system vendor, Marcus Communication. And I was advised that our current AVTEC computer that run our dispatch consoles, if you remember several years ago, I believe it was around twenty fourteen, we became came to the Board of Select and to the Board of Finance and asked for some funding to purchase our dispatch consoles because our existing console was failing. We were able to get the two companies to get into a bidding war. Marcus won the bidding war. Marcus won the uh bidding war and gave us a really good price on two AVTEC dispatch consoles. But that was in, like I said, twenty-fourteen. Well, fast forward to twenty-twenty, and those computers are running on Windows seven. Which, as everybody probably knows, Windows seven is no longer supported by Microsoft. Further, our current, we can't just take uh new computers and put them in there. Because our current AVTEC system will not run on Windows ten. So we, what is required is we have to update our AVTEC system. Which is not too costly. In fact, if they, AVTEC actually gave us a really good deal. That if we sign up with them at to do um service warranty and support uh twenty-four seven. They gave us uh the old pricing, which was fifteen hundred dollars per console uh for this year. And if we uh purchase that for three thousand dollars, they will automatically update us to the most current AVTEC version. And then next year, we'll work into the IT budget or our budget, the cost of uh two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. Which is a new um cost per per unit um moving forward. So we'll work that into our budgets moving forward. So that would be roughly six thousand dollars. Um, so we're, they're giving us a three thousand dollar uh deal on that. So in order to for us to do this, we have to replace two uh aging Windows sevens computers. Uh, they're high end computers. They cost a little over a thousand dollars a piece. Um, I do have the specs on them. Um, I was going to add, reach out to our IT people to see if they can match the pricing or come in somewhere near. I it maybe to save us a few dollars if we possibly could. But there is labor involved and a server upgrade. And so what I've tried to get across to you, we need three thousand dollars for the AVTEC update. Which will also give us uh warranty and support for the next year. And we need nine thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. For the labor, two new computers and to for Marcus to do the upgrade of our half tech system.
What he said.
Are you asking for a total of twelve thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fourteen cents then?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
And that's all it, right?
That's it.
All IT support costs?
Yep, that'll cover it. Um, and like I said, the next thing we'll just have to budget is moving forward is that. Uh, additional twenty-four hour in as as basically uh. Part of them giving us that three thousand dollars, we have to agree to continue that twenty-four uh warranty support for three more years. But with an aging system like that, I mean, it's it, you know, it's five years old now, and then moving forward. Three years from now, it's going to be eight years. It makes sense that we probably just build it into our budget and renew that every year moving forward. Just to ensure that we have twenty-four hour support on it.
That's the twenty-four hour support is that also uh includes. Patches and updates and everything throughout the contract period that there's no other costs we're going to incur after that, right?
That's correct.
Other questions or comments for the chief or the deputy? So this would be that same circumstance. Um, we would ask for an added appropriation of the Board of Finance. An amount of twelve thousand one sixty-seven for uh AVTEC dispatch council upgrades. Marie?
Yep, Marie, I'll make a motion that we forward to the Board of Finance. Our request for added appropriation in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. To be utilized for the AVTEC dispatch upgrading of the software packages. And two new computers and labels associated with such project.
Sarah Muska, selectmen, I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Branford doesn't have any for us?
Never know, I might have to uh, I might have to call and give it a check.
Extend our courtesy to them, how much we appreciate what they've done and the efforts that you guys did. So kudos to you guys.
I will definitely do so.
That was very funny.
I'm sorry.
Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman Norde.
Hi.
Motion carries. For those of you who don't know, Marie will be opening at the at City Stadium. They start the brouhaha again. Uh, and this, uh, so ten involves the the chief and the deputy. Um, this is the least good news of a bunch, I think. Um, and we've had a couple of fits and starts about this already in in my tenure. So chief, what are you doing?
So we we need to formalize our discussions on uh our radio system. So it it basically went into our, the current radio system. Went into effect and operational prior to my arrival. So. That's at least more than seventeen and a half years ago that the radio system went into effect. And in order to get a radio system here, you need to have input from a lot of people, from a lot of agencies. Because the radio system we use, police, fire, EMS, public works, the school system. And so on and so forth. It's a townwide system. And it is well beyond its its lifespan. And in consultation with our police commission, we've been talking about it for several years now. We've decided that we have to bring this to you in a more formalized way. Because it's probably a long project. It's definitely an expensive project. But as as soon as tomorrow, this thing could collapse on us. So I don't want to be the doom and gloom guy, but um. It's it's um in its elderly uh stages of of a system. Do you want to discuss it for a second, Rog?
Yeah, most most high end radio systems have a life expectancy of roughly ten years. And that's when I say high end, those are like high end Motorola systems. They uh suggest that you really start to begin to, we want to think about replacing components or upgrading those systems. The system that we currently have is uh an LTR system. Which I will bore you with the details, but it's if some of you have used it, maybe some haven't. Uh, the way it works is when you push the button to transmit. It searches for an open channel over a series of channels that are used on on this radio system. And then once it finds a channel, then it allows you to transmit your message. And it has to do that every single time you trans somebody transmit. It was at the time a very cost effective radio system for the for the town because it could cover everybody. But the problem is our fire departments are growing in size. Uh, we're there, we're responding to more calls. Uh, the police department has grown a little bit. Um, Public Works has grown a little bit. There's more use of the radios. And we're finding even the EMSs on our radio system as part of the uh contract that we have with them. We have to deliver a radio system. But the problem is, is we, when we have a major incident right now, where EMS is out. Uh, Public Works is out, everybody's out and working. We're not able to get a channel immediately. You key up your microphone and there's a pause. Like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, before you find an open channel so you can talk. Now, it doesn't happen all the time, but it's only happen, it's happening when we're all deployed. And it's not necessarily part of the system aging. Because we've had uh our uh Marcus Communication in there doing regular updates. And, you know, going in there several times a year to make sure everything's functioning properly. So we're doing our due diligence, but we may have as a town outgrown a system that is. Aging is is approaching almost twice the life expectancy of a system. So to give you an idea, and chief, correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe Windsor recently went through a upgrade of their system, and it was upwards of nine million dollars for the radio system. So that's what we're talking about. So there may be some happy medium. Maybe keep our existing radio system for certain town entities. Keep it held together as best we can, and then have maybe police and fire on another system. There's a lot of things that we can think about, and that's why we feel that we need to bring all players together. And you as uh one of the boards moving forward needs to think of ways that to maybe. How can we fund this over the next four or five years to get this project moving? And then the committee would get everybody's input and try to get uh the best system for our community.
So what Roger just described when when and Jason was mentioning before of a couple failures. It's been a crazy year, and we've had numerous times, I can't even count them on two hands anymore. Where there are multiple departments deployed on an incident from police, fire, EMS and public works trying to work. And ten and fifteen and sometimes thirty seconds. Well, that that thirty seconds could mean a police officer is getting beat or and and is in trouble and calling for help. So it's catastrophic, and it is aging. I want to mention that. We've had some breakdowns over the years. That's what brought us to this attention that required maintenance and things of that nature. Yes, it is expensive, but the town has to have a conversation now. Um, we're only users of it. You're, you know, there's a lot of other agencies that have different desires, wants and needs. So I think everybody needs to be in the room. I usually, there's a professional consultant involved to try to help build. One of the things, so that you don't think we're not doing our normal thing, we try to look for the cheapest way. Last year, Rog, if you'll remember, and you can talk about it a little bit, we tried to test the statewide radio system here. Which would have been a very cost effective way to go about doing it. And that test failed miserably. It it, there's so many dead spots, we can't get out of Walmart. High school, middle school, they're dead areas all over town. It would probably be more money to go on to the statewide system. So we're looking at things like that, but I think we're at the point that it's. It's time to formalize these discussions and formulate a a group. I remember when I did come here in two thousand and three. Um, the group consisted of police, fire, EMS, public works, there were elected officials, there was a paid consultant. There was, there was a lot of people, ten to twelve people on that group um when they finally built this system. So I think you need to do something like that and then finance it and people involved in all different levels. So I think it's time to do this.
So I think I think it'd be appropriate for me to be involved with that, Amy O'Toole for Finance. Both fire departments, PD, EMS, public schools, DPW, WPCA and Community Services. Any other users? What's that?
The school system?
Yeah, I said them.
Okay.
So uh, would it, would a good first step be for for maybe the three of us to get together and find? Uh, you know, research the consultant piece of it and then pull a group together? Chief or deputy?
Yeah, yeah, I think I I think I would start reaching out to maybe Windsor and some places that just did it. To see who did the consultancy there. I know some had some luck with people and some had some bad luck. Because they were pushing a certain vendor or something like that. So, yeah, we can, we can definitely research that for you.
Yeah, that, I think that would be a a good first step, and then we can start grouping it.
Okay.
Other feedback from the board?
This would be a, end up being, I mean, once you get a recommendation, this would be a CIP thing, right?
Probably a bonding thing.
Yeah.
Don't say bonding. I mean.
Well, we have a million dollars for CIP. If we if we dedicate five years of our CIP to this, that covers half the potential costs. That's not really, I mean, we're bonding this.
So you're thinking it's what, five million?
They said nine.
Windsor was at nine, nine and a half, and they are, they are pretty big. Um, it depends on what work the towers need and think whether it needs a new tower or whatever. I, you know, listen, this thing, it's a lot bigger than me, and you've got to be really smart to work with radios. So I can't guess, but let's say at least six million dollars.
So we were just talking about, we have uh six million dollars of unfunded projects that need to be bonded. That we can't bond because of our two percent uh rule, basically. So this would, you know, potentially make it twelve million dollars that we need to bond. There's a lot of priorities and no money, and I don't see how we get there. I don't want to kill a project right now. I mean, we got to have the information and all that, but I'm like, thinking. Have some structural issues here to deal with.
I think.
One issue you got to remember, though. When I call you tomorrow and I say that this radio system just went down. You're going to spend six million dollars tomorrow.
No, and I I don't, don't get me wrong. I I think I I think it's obvious I agree with uh spending before we need to. Uh, and planning ahead, just pointing out the reality of the situation that we have here. It's going to be, uh, it's going to be, we got to start working now because it's going to be hard.
Well, the this is that, a- and this is going to sound somewhat out of touch, but it really isn't. Um, the twelve million dollars of bonded projects is really not a lot of money. Um, it's once, once the existing debt falls off, that frees up more than that. Um, we we have for bond capacity, we have substantially more than we have bonded. It's just the debt service cap that's that's holding us down. Um, so. I think doing some due diligence now and really getting ahead of this is is the smart thing to be doing. And then, you know, maybe we can look into if there's an opportunity or or a need to refinance some existing debt. I mean, that's that's why it's important to have Amy involved, because she's she's the keeper of that kind of knowledge.
Um, the the problem that I I'm bringing up is a problem at the end of it when we have the number, right? You guys, we got to get there first uh with all the information. So I'm not like trying to poo poo put together and 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 figuring this out, what we need to do. Just saying, we also simultaneously have to be working on our, you know, the long term plan for what we're going to bond. Because we have a lot of other stuff that is going to go into that, I think.
Going back to when we first started having problems years ago, when uh, I believe it was on Duffy was in charge of the police department back. Back when the um original project started, um, if my mind me well, um, and that was a state. Collaborative kind of thing going on. They were looking at some regionalization kind of stuff. Um, if I recall right, um, but in the end. Everybody did what they had to do for themselves, but kind of collectively, if I recall right. And it took a long time. Um, and the needs of the fire department were a little bit different than the needs of of uh the police department. Um, and then there was a school had some issues, if I recall. So this is not a short term collaborative thing. This is going to take a few years to get it all together and to make sure that everybody has what they need. And it's going to be mandatory to it, so. Because last time it pretty early there for a while.
This is a three to five year project all day long, and that's why we wanted to bring it to you now. Because if you don't start um looking at it now. One, you're not going to be ready, and two, you're going to look at me and say, why didn't you tell us? So this is me sharing a little of that risk. Yeah, you know, I it.
Wasn't there another agreement with um the Talon County? Because one of the, I think it was the ambulance at the time was on something different and got merged in.
That would have been right before me, Maria. I know what you're talking about. Um, everything you just described Duffy and and I do remember it was about a twelve to fifteen person, but it was just breaking up. but it was just breaking up. And literally, the radio system was in effect for like a month.
Right.
So I don't remember the details of that. We've been with Collin County since I've been here, so I don't know the details of that.
All right. I do. Got to start it now.
Other questions or comments? So Chief, if you could reach out to the folks in Windsor who did the research, I'll also do the same with Hartford. And we'll see if we can get a consultant that may fit our needs, and then we can bring it back to the board and take action from there.
So Windsor just built a $30 million police station. Want me to ask about that, too?
I've seen Hartford's building a police station, and let me tell you, neither of those things are happening.
I guess I got my part for my comedy show.
I'll open for you.
So you may think that's the case, but the real sleeper comedian of the bunch is the deputy chief. He's the one you don't see coming. Okay. So gentlemen, if you'll stick around, I'm going to need you for one item in executive session as well.
Okay.
The next, I'm going to put this aside. The next item is the next E24 referral. The gentleman names Mr. McGrath, James McGrath, reached out and wants to donate a parcel of property to the town. And you can see in your packet, it is the blue square. It's 02442030 is the map block and lot. The green pieces are already town-owned properties. The long arrow stretch, what would be the south side of Plantation Road, is what is known as the Schumi property. The larger square section on the north side of Plantation Road is, I think colloquially referred to as the town farm. But it's usually it's owned or it's controlled by a hunting club in town. I'm not even sure if they're still active.
They are.
The parcel in question, 02442030, that's a rear lot. It doesn't have any frontage at all. The gentleman is elderly and just wants to give it to the town. So this is one of those circumstances where, in order to accept property, we need to go through the town meeting process. But before that, we need to do an 024 referral for this as well. So we included in here the property card. And a couple of the maps, you can see the GIS map. I think we did a small version and a larger version of that. So this is another one of those things that we would refer to, planning and zoning, for them to do an E24 referral, which is where they're reviewing the potential acquisition of land to make sure that it comports with the town's plan of conservation and development. Questions or comments about this?
I would just like to add that this actually fits right in with our plan of conservation and development in the respect of protecting the Scenic River watershed. So I would be in favor of it. It continues a project, basically, that's a little piece by piece. We're, you know, be able to have more, we're going to be able to have more hiking trails and access to the wild for the residents of this town. It's a good idea.
I agree. Other comments? So it asks for a motion to refer to the Planning and Zoning Commission this parcel of property with map block lot 02442030 for an E24 referral?
I would make that motion.
Is there a second?
There are a must, a selectman, I'll second.
Made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman Nordell?
Aye.
Tax refund?
There are a must, a selectman, I'll move that we approve the tax refunds totaling $374.16.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman Nordell?
Aye.
Selectments reports. The East Windsor Public School System is back in session, and they are offering free meals on Wednesday for pickup from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM at all three schools. On all other days of the week, meals can be picked up at Public Elementary School from 9:15 to 10:15, at the middle school from 8:15 to 9:15, and at East Windsor High School from 7:45 to 8:45. These are available to all students who've signed up, and even if your child isn't in school that day. If you have signed up, please make arrangements to pick up those meals during those times. So far, the participation compared to those who have indicated that they wanted to participate are far off. By now, every registered voter should have received an absentee ballot application. If you have not received one and you want to vote absentee, please call the town clerk's office. In-person voting will also be available on Election Day. Over several days last week, I worked with CGI Communications to create promotional videos showcasing the town of East Windsor. We filmed videos pertaining to the quality of life in town, education, and economic development opportunities. When finished, the videos will be hosted on the town website. Those were produced at no cost to the town and were made possible through ad support from the local community. Special thanks to those who participated in the videos. Aaron Sfedlow from Northlight Energy, Jay Ursery from JR Russo Associates, Eric Nielsen from Geister Supermarket, Superintendent of Schools Christine DeBarge, Lexi Trow, Tim Rodrigue, Director of Recreation and Community Services Melissa Maltese, former longtime East Windsor teacher and coach Karen Drake, and others. Those videos are a component of our overall marketing efforts to showcase the great community that we are, and they dovetail into the community newsletter that we send out to homes several times per year. In the coming months, we will also be working on an interactive economic development tool as well as improving transparency in our local permitting process through the implementation of a public-facing portal available to applicants. Presser Amy O'Toole has reported that we will be returning about $750,000 to the general fund from the town side of the budget now that the 2019-2020 fiscal year is closed. None of the $650,000 budgeted from the fund balance was necessary to balance out the books this year. Yesterday, I participated in a Route 5 corridor study advisory committee meeting. This is a project that was actually well underway and was entering the public face just as COVID-19 happened. The review of the corridor has been an ongoing effort to mitigate traffic congestion along Route 5 and to plan for future development. The draft study is now going to be reviewed by ConDOT before being formally presented to the Board of Selectmen later this fall. The advisory committee will also be holding a public information session on the proposal around that same time. The town is starting to resume some limited in-person activities. The senior center is offering certain personal care services and has restarted its coffee hour program. Both are by appointment only. Next month, Parks and Recreation will resume its dance program and after-school programming. For more information about those programs, please call the Parks and Recreation Department at 860-623-6662. Along those lines, today, I was very happy to join members of the East Windsor Senior Center for Coffee. I have been looking forward to seeing those familiar faces for a long time, and it was great to catch up with those people in person. I'm so glad to see that folks have stayed healthy and are starting to be comfortable returning to some form of normal activity. That's all I have respectfully submitted. Selectman D'Souza?
I just want to remind everyone the importance in completing the 2020 census. An accurate count of the East Windsor residents will ensure our fair share of the federal funding and to properly distribute the seats to the US Senate. If you haven't completed the form, you can do so by going to my2020census.gov. The deadline to do so is quickly approaching. That deadline date is September 30th, 2020. So you have a couple of days left. If you're planning on voting via absentee ballot for the November 3rd, 2020 election, now is the time to be proactive. If you have not received your request for an absentee ballot, you can do so by requesting one from the town clerk's office. Remember to stay safe when venturing out and try to support our local independent businesses while enjoying what is left of the warm weather. On September 9th, 2020, I attended via Zoom the Police Commission meeting. On September 14th, 2020, due to a family commitment, I was not able to attend the Park and Recreation Committee meeting, but I did follow up with the Recording Secretary. Director Maltese is working on acquiring new cost estimates for the CIP submission. The same four initiatives that were out last year will be resubmitted, i.e. consultants to do a full assessment of our parks and playgrounds, playground equipment replacement, expansion and renovations of fields, and basketball court expansion. The discussion, park projects, update, and fall programs took place. For additional information, you can see the minutes online for their September 14th meeting. September 16, I attended via Zoom the Board of Finance meeting, and the Broadway Mill Remediation Committee meeting was canceled due to the fact that we're waiting on the individuals that are involved with that to get back to us. Jason, it's not part of my report, but just because it come up, it's my understanding that there's a lot of changes happening with the Collins Group and UTC. And I just want to make sure that we don't get lost in that reductions that they got planned and the people that we've been dealing with get replaced if they're no longer going to be there. So just wanted to throw that out as a reminder.
Attorney Hoffman is dealing with their corporation counsel. They're not going anywhere. They don't outsource.
All right, just wanted to make sure. That's all I got.
Selectman Muska?
On September 9th, the Board of Education held their regular meeting via Zoom. At this time, school had been in session for four days, and Superintendent Dr. DeBarge reported that both cohorts had been back into the buildings and that she'd received mostly positive feedback from the bus company and the principals. However, there were some technology issues that they were working to correct, and Jason already touched on the meal availability. The board discussed that there would be some flexibility and some changes to the guidelines for conducting teacher evaluations given the current situation. Open house and parent-teacher conferences are expected to be virtual at this time, and further details should be coming out in early October. The state is requiring that school districts report to them on a weekly basis with statistics on the children that have chosen to opt out. The goal of this is to make sure that students are not disengaged and to encourage participation. And these reports will eventually be made public. Soccer and cross-country will be proceeding forward. No fans will be allowed to watch the sports in the stands, and there are hopes of getting a camera system to record and broadcast games. On September 14th, the Warehouse Point Fire Commissioners held their meeting one week later than usual due to Labor Day. Their drive-through vote that took place on September 3rd to approve an appropriation and bond authorization of $2 million for, in addition to the district's Fire Station 1 and purchase of one pumper ladder truck, did pass 45 to 0. The commission approved the creation of a building committee, and the district's attorney has begun looking for finance options to fund these projects. There were 31 fire inspections completed in the month of August and 94 calls, most of which were in regards to the downwires resulting from the tropical storm. The Warehouse Point Fire Department Auxiliary will hold a fundraiser selling moms this weekend, the 19th and 20th, both Saturday and Sunday, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Station 1 at 89 Bridge Street. There will be three different sizes available with prices ranging from $5 to $18. Last night, the Board of Finance did meet. Jason already spoke about us being in the positive and not to be into the fund balance. Given the tax deferment, the town is in very good shape for tax collection with about 50% of taxes collected, where we are usually at around 55% to 57% at this point. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Selectman Baker?
So I was off last week. I was out of the state. But I do have one thing I'd like to talk about tonight. This morning, I attended a webinar that was put on by the Boston Federal Reserve and CCM, and it was in regards to a study that the Federal Reserve had funded, entitled "Measuring Disparities in Costs and Spending Across Connecticut School Districts." So basically, the gist of it was measuring the cost efficiency of the dollars that are going into the various districts and, you know, kind of figuring out how and why, you know, different districts are spending so much per pupil and what that's getting them. It was really interesting. The panelists were varied. A few that I remember were Mayor of New Haven, the Mayor of Stanford, Senator McCrory, the Business Development Executive for Stanley Black &amp; Decker, a few other PhD guys. It was a really, really good discussion. There's going to be another study coming out that's then going to, you know, be based on the research of how to actually, once you've achieved better cost efficiency. And I guess I should define cost efficiency. What they're talking about there is when you're giving dollars to a district, the dollars that are actually spent on educating a student rather than dollars that are spent providing security or transportation or any of these other things. So it's really eye-opening. So anyway, there's a new study to follow up about, okay, so if you're going to measure this, how would you then spend those dollars more wisely to get a better outcome for students? So that, I don't know when they're coming out with that. But the whole reason behind this is there, you know, there's various people looking at how to change the ECS formula so it actually works for the districts that, you know, that need it. Anyway, I thought it was really interesting. I sent you guys a copy of the report to your selectman addresses in case you wanted to look at it. There was some very eye-opening things in there. But that's what I have for you tonight.
Thank you, sir. Last but not least, Selectman Nordell?
Okay. So let's see, a lot of my report touches base on a lot of the stuff we've already talked about tonight with the Police Commission, with them both being here tonight, looking for those funds. I had already heard about that on their meeting back on September 9th. Let's see what, they also took a lot of complaints related to traffic and what could be with the Silverman Group project that's being built on Route 5 and South Water Street. They talked about concerns they had for traffic and traffic safety issues and have submitted to the state that they feel that they should be addressed. They found the developer and the state did not agree with their concerns, but they will be rejecting their proposal and asking for a hearing at the state level. Many residents were in attendance of that Police Commission meeting who spoke out in opposition to that project and had a lot of concerns about the traffic. The request made by the Historical Society was found out to be not going to be granted by the state. They had requested a couple of months ago for a roadside be put out on Route 5. It was denied, apparently, because the Historical Society had such limited hours. Chief DeMarco also explained how he will be requesting again an extension for submitting their CIP numbers because the request is too early for them to get properly prepared for that. For that request. East Windsor Press and Rec will host a drive-through trick-or-treat event. This will take place Thursday, October 29th, from 5:00 to 7:00. That was just announced today. That's going to take place at the East Windsor Reservoir. As we talked about tonight, we're still seeking members for the Diversity Council. So if anyone has interest, get in touch with any selectman. I will also post a link to the application that can be turned into the first selectman's office or mailed in. The Trow Museum is having another concert this Sunday. Probably will be the last one from 1:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon. They're also starting their pumpkin patch event. They're also starting their Pumpkin Patch Event, um, going Thursdays through Sundays, starting September 24th until the end of October. Uh, you can check their website or Facebook for ticket info. Um, and this past Sunday, I did a walk with Sarah Muska. I thought she was gonna touch on this, but apparently she forgot. With several other residents to raise money for food share and, um, awareness for hunger, um, I think we raised $560, um, that was gonna be donated to food share. Plus, we, um, gathered lots of, uh, dried food and non-perishables for them as well. So that was a good event. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Public participation. This is the public's second opportunity to address the board. As I explained at the outset of things, I've, uh, restricted people's ability to unmute themselves because of some illicit behavior that happened, uh, at a meeting earlier in the week. So if there are any members of the public who would like to address the board, please indicate so, uh, as such by selecting one of the reaction buttons, either the, the hand clapping or thumbs up, and I'll invite you to unmute yourselves. Are, are there any comments from members of the public? Any comments from members of the public?
Jason, I'd just like to point out that in the Zoom group chat, Steve had, uh, posted earlier during our conversation, trying to get ahold of him, that he did not need to address the board.
Yeah, I, I noticed that afterwards, but thank you.
Yeah.
If there are no other comments from the public, um, we will have an executive session, uh, to include the Chief of Police and the Deputy Chief of Police. So I would need a motion to go into executive session to include those gentlemen as well.
Selectman Nordell will move that we move to executive session with Chief DeMarco and Deputy Chief Hart.
Is there a second?
Sarah Muska Selectmen, I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman Nordell?
Aye.
We're gonna go into executive session at 8:32 PM. It's 9:37. We're coming out of executive session. Um, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize, um, the Everbridge proposal, quote number 55464. You want it in more detail than that?
Uh, if you could just note that it's a 36-month contract at $8,563 per year for three years, plus an initial $685.
Contract, contract for three years, um, in the amount of a yearly fee of $8,563.30 and a one-time implementation and setup fee of $685.06.
Is there a second?
Selectman Nordell will second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman Nordell?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any other business to come before the board? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn would be in order?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made by Alan, seconded by Sarah. Uh, all in favor? Selectman Baker? Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman Nordell?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 9:39. Thank you all.